Wednesday, November 6, 2024. The time is 6:00 PM. We are in the Eldon F. Marara Board of Selectmen Meeting Room on the second floor of Town Hall. Before we begin the meeting, or before we stand for the pledge, please be aware this meeting is being recorded for use on the Internet and our local cable station. If everybody could join me in standing for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. The first item on the agenda for 6:00 PM this evening is a motion to enter into executive session. The motion is, I would entertain a motion to enter an executive session to consider the purchase of real property, specifically Zero Howard Street and Zero Bryant Street, respectively. Since, in my opinion as Chair, discussing in open session would be detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the town, the Board will convene into open session at the end of executive session. We will disclose the Board's position relative to each property, respectively, which is anticipated to be around 6:30. I need a roll call vote for this.
Perez, yes?
Ryan, yes?
Yes.
All right. I'm going to read a, we're about to head into a public hearing, and I am going to read the notice. So for 337 West Center Street, legal notice, Town of West Bridgewater Public Hearing Board of Selectmen pursuant to Chapter 138 in Chapter 140 Massachusetts General Laws, a public hearing will be held on Wednesday, November 6, 2024, at 6:30 PM in the Eldon F. Marara Board of Selectmen Meeting Room, Town Hall, 65 North Main Street, West Bridgewater, Massachusetts, on the application for a transfer of an annual all alcohol liquor license from Maria Almeida, 337 West Center Street, West Bridgewater, Massachusetts, to Paulo J. M. Almeida, DBA Daybreak Family Restaurant, 337 West Center Street, West Bridgewater, Massachusetts. Interested parties are invited to be present and to be heard. Board of Selectmen, Jeff P. Ryan, Chair. So, good evening.
Good evening.
This is pretty straightforward on our agenda. It is just a change of ownership.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry. I need to make a motion to open the hearing.
I'll make a motion to open the hearing.
Awesome.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
How you doing?
Same to you.
Apologies. Lot of rules. So, this is pretty much just a straight transfer within the family. Any, anything you want to mention or speak to regarding it? Nothing's really changing, right?
No.
Everything is the same.
So.
Any other positive recommendation from the police department?
Yep. The one question we always ask when it comes to any type of liquor license is, do you have a full understanding of the town's regulations and the state's regulations? If you have any questions, you know, ask them now. We sort of have a strict policy based on violation and offenses. There's not, we don't really have any wiggle room. We just, you know, first offense is this, second offense is that. So, it's an opportunity now if you, I know it sounded like you spoke with Sergeant Reagan and went over everything and made it sound like everything was good, but just want to double check on that. Hearing, hearing nothing? Nothing else? We're good?
Yep. Ready for a motion?
Yeah.
Make a motion to approve the change of ownership for Daybreak Family Restaurant located at 337 West Center Street as presented.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
See you in the morning.
Thank you. Short story.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Don't change anything.
No problem.
That's not too.
Okay.
Not changing, we're just like.
Just a little.
I mean the foods, don't change the food.
No, the food, no. I'm not changing all the food. The food is okay.
Can you, if you could see Jerry Lawrence in the corner, far away? That would be fantastic.
No, that's his seat. That's his seat at the back.
It is reserved.
Thank you guys. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ray.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Moving along, appointments. Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you, David. I'll make a motion to close the hearing. I'll say, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Thank you for the refresher on public hearings. Moving along, warrants, Board of Selectmen business. First on the list is Mr. Golda, our Treasurer and Collector. And first up is a vote to award the bid for the town's annual municipal purpose loan to Piper Sandler and Company.
Yep. So, this is the annual loan we take out every year around this time. Any short-term borrowing falls under this, it gets approved at town meeting. The only new money on it this year is the feasibility study that was approved last October at the town meeting. Everything else, we're just making some paydowns. So, Piper Sandler was the winning bidder at a 3.349 net interest cost, which is down about 1.5% from last year. So, that's good for the interest cost part of it. Yeah, it's a one-year note, and next year, we'll do it again.
I had asked David one question. Christine, if you could go forward just one, yeah. The line that says school with the 430, exactly what is that?
That's still related to the middle, senior high school project. At the end of that project, we originally got approval for like $65 million in borrowing, and we only had to borrow about half of it, but we had that other 30 million to borrow when we needed. So, there were some cost overruns, or whatever the case was. And we haven't gone back to the bond market since then, so if we do, that'll get lumped into the other school payments, but right now, we've been paying it down year by year.
But that's not to be inferred that that's all that's left to pay on that school?
No, no. It's still about 21 million on that.
Yes.
Yeah.
Progress. All right. Any discussion? So, for this, we have a rather long document.
You do. So, your choices are brought on page 26 and 27 in your packet. You will see that there is a page and a half of voted, so voted, be it resolved. You have your choice. You can read that entire motion and make it into a motion and read it, or you can just accept it and that it was prepared by our bond counsel, and as a result, you can just take a motion to approve the vote as prepared by bond counsel and present it to the Board.
Make a motion to approve. What's this thing called?
That's okay. Move to approve the vote prepared by bond counsel and presented to the Board, or as presented to the Board.
Make a motion to approve as prepared by bond counsel. Make a motion to the Board.
There we go.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Tough one.
Okay. And so, as a result of that, you get to sign a bunch of papers. So, the first one here is the signature page for the note itself. And then, this is just for you. That's two copies of the, of the actual vote by the Board.
And then, next?
I got, oh, we got a few more.
Yep. Good.
This is the no litigation and official statement certificate. This year, we went out, we got the loan approved by, bank approved, so we had to submit some more financial information, so there's a few more signature pages. This is the significant events disclosure certificate. Well, that was actually the tax certificate. This is the significant.
Oh, well, I'm not the signee.
Events disclosure. We need them all. And that's the last one for.
For the general public, Scott's in middle vacation. Came in to do this. Torturers, signatures.
Right after I took over, we bonded for the golf course, and that was a 30-year bond, and each note had its own year. So, it was a lot of, that was a lot of signing. So, that's all for that one. And then, we also have the interim loan note from the Massachusetts Clean Water Trust. This is the PFAS project on Manley Street. The Clean Water Trust approved a 0% interest interim loan note. So, you need to take the same kind of vote to approve that, but if you have any other questions about that. Right now, this is a 20-year note at 0%. Once the project is complete, they'll go back, depending how much money they spent, and do a final closing on that.
So, if the Board is aware, the water department ought to present this to town meeting and receive approval. So, at that point, it was envisioned, we'll have approval for a, to bond the money, but we may have to get a market rate loan. So, the nice thing is that the water department working with Scott, we signed all the paperwork, we've been able to get a 0% loan through the state revolving fund. So, that's what Scott is presenting to you now. So, you'll see on page 37 and page 38, again, it's about a page and a half long, it is voted, so voted, be it resolved, or instead of reading that, you can do the exact same motion, which is to move to approve the vote prepared by bond counsel and present it to the Board.
Make a motion to move and approve the vote as presented by bond counsel and presented to the Board. I did it right the second time.
And then, before, so, make the motion, but I, one point. This is, the principal amount on this is $3,920,285, right?
Correct. Yep. So, it was approved up to 4 million, and then, that was the total project cost.
Just know that people watch. We should at least include that number in the discussion, so. Any objections? Hearing nothing? No conversation? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Great.
Just a couple signatures for that one, too. This is the note itself. Two copies of the vote. And copies of the tax exempt certificate.
Thanks for getting that?
Thank you.
If you could get the new school at 0% interest, if you could start working on that.
Yeah, I'll do my best.
Appreciate that.
Actually, if you could go back and get that 21 million still in the old school, I'm sure it's fair we take it, too. But they are low.
Thank you very much. And it's all set.
Awesome. Thank you. Enjoy your vacation.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you, Scott. Good night, Scott. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott.
Okay. Moving along, next on the agenda is review and vote and recommendation, approve motion and assign readers for articles for the special town meeting.
So, as you know, we have a special town meeting called for eight days from now, in November 14. There are three warrant articles. You'll see that the motions are in front of you. Article one is because our town moderator will not be available that evening. We need to have a temporary town moderator. I have provided to you a standard template motion, but it makes no sense for us to make the motion to nominate and then actually to nominate in a person. Like, we don't have to do two motions.
Right.
We can do it one time. I think it's important that we have somebody who is qualified, that can run the meeting, who has done it in the past, is versed in parliamentary procedure, and will also be versed specifically to this meeting, because I will obviously sit with that person and go through the articles and the motions as I do for every meeting with whoever the moderator is. The town clerk has offered to do this, and she certainly checks each and every one of those boxes of qualification. So, she will buy our bylaw, because we have no moderator. She will actually open the meeting. When we go to Article one, I will, I'm asking the Board to make this motion. Somebody from the floor could, but I think it would be good to show some leadership to say, to be a leader.
Can we include her name in the motion right now?
I would. So, that's my, that's my request, is that we take to see if the town will vote to nominate town clerk Annie Iantelli as a temporary town moderator. I would ask that one of you read that motion. Somebody else will second it, and then, the town can take a vote. If somebody else is still freedom, is still free to nominate, you know, so then, there has to be a vote. But, you know, Annie is qualified and.
And then Sharon would assume the role as town clerk.
That is entirely correct. So, Sharon is the assistant town clerk, will then assume the responsibilities automatically of the town clerk role at that time.
Okay. I don't have any objection to that?
No. I'll read number one.
Okay. Marcy, would you like number two?
Sure.
I'll take three.
All right. So, Marcy and Jeff.
Sorry. If anybody else wants number one, let me know.
Nope.
So, in Article two, we are going to be looking to purchase land on Howard Street. It will be $430,000. We do have a purchase and sale agreement right now from the sellers. We will be looking to add some contingencies to it as well, which is standard for us. Those standard contingencies are subject to town meeting approval, subject to clean tax entitlement, those items such as that. I'm also going to recommend to the Board that we pay cash with it. We have $3.2 million in free cash. I think it would be a good use of our free cash at 430,000. Normally, a free cash article does require only a majority vote. However, all purchases of real property also require, actually requires two-thirds. So, even though we're paying cash, it will still require a two-thirds vote. As part of this procurement, we are going to have to identify this property as a unique parcel, and that's why the town is looking to purchase it. We will do that a little bit later on the agenda, unless you are discussing now, but you will do that as part of it as well. But, my question to you is, your motion as currently presented is free cash at 430,000, so it'll be a transfer of free cash. Is that okay with you? If not, then we'll have to amend it.
I'm fine with that.
I'm fine with that.
If approved, I'm fine with it.
Okay. All right. And then, Article three would be for $1 million for our first right of refusal property on Bryant Street. Again, we do have 3.2 million, now in theory, 2.8. But I think, in my opinion, I think that it would be a poor use of free cash of $1 million, not knowing what we have coming up at our annual town meeting, how we normally use and appropriate those funds. So, as a result, I would recommend to the Board that we borrow for that, and that the motion would be a borrowing article. Because it's a borrowing article, it would require two-thirds anyway, but again, because we're purchasing properties, two-thirds, so that would require a two-thirds vote as well. So, does anybody have any objections to it being a borrowing article?
Not here. Mike?
All right. So, thank you. So, that means that we have our motion set, so now, the Board just has to make a recommendation. The moderator will ask the Board of Selectmen and then the Finance Committee as to what their recommendations are on each one. We don't need a recommendation on Article one, but we do, I would ask you to take a vote on what the Board's recommendation will be on Article two and then on Article three.
So, I'll start the conversation quickly on Article two. I think this is a unique property. It's in the center of town, which is a great location. It's adjacent, if you will, to War Memorial Park. It's somewhat adjacent to the Howard School, the police station, the fire station. Honestly, I'd hate to see an apartment building or something along those lines go on that particular piece of property. Price of it, it was appraised by the seller's bank at $710,000. The purchase price is $400,000 and $30,000 in legal fees in there, I believe. So, it's, it's being purchased at a significant discount to the town with a few contingencies, but one of those contingencies is, you know, not the development, you know, basically to be left for recreation or open space. And then, the third, the third piece to this is, as I've watched, and I know Marcy and David have attended the school building committee meetings, as the committee is zeroing in on locations for what could be a prospective school, and understand that needs to go through all sorts of approval processes. It looks like it's really coming down to either the current location in Roselle or on the fields at Howard. Should it come on the fields at Howard, that'll put the town in a deficit of two athletic fields, and this particular property might be able to alleviate some of that, if not all of that. Up for discussion, but it certainly looks like we can easily put one field there. Two might create a parking issue. But nonetheless, it would be a field within walking distance from, A, the Howard School, B, the high school, or it can be an extension of War Memorial or whatever else, but it's prime location in the center of town. To me, it makes sense that we preserve it and use it for some sort of open space recreation type purpose, so.
I agree.
I am in favor of Article two.
I'm also in favor of Article two for all of those reasons.
Agree. I'm in favor with that, for those reasons.
All right. So, we are 3-0 recommending?
Yep.
Moving on to Article three. This being a 61A property, and these properties don't pop up or appear all that often. It's a unique, it's a unique situation for the town where we get to, you know, obviously match the bid of $1 million for 23 acres. This, again, is not located all that far from the center of town. The town, over the last few years, everybody knows, is, we hear a lot of complaining that there's been an excessive amount of development. There's still another 30-plus houses in the works right now. We've seen our elementary schools become really tight on space, hence the need to look for a new school. We've seen issues with water over the summer, where comments in the groundwater being that the tank is stirred up because too much water's being used at once. So, again, this is, we don't get this opportunity with a lot of land to sort of halt or stop development, and this property, this price, while a million dollars is a significant amount of money, it, I could argue that we would save money on purchasing this versus letting it be developed. So, for those reasons, I'm in favor of Article three.
I'm also in favor of Article three for those reasons. I think that preserving as much open space in town is important, and I've heard the complaints from the residents as well, so I'm in favor.
Was it my turn?
There is literally nobody else in the room to ask tonight.
Yeah, I mean, those are all real good, valid points with, with Zero Bryant. It's just, it's a lot of money. It's, I know the property's really wet. I'm in favor of letting the people of the town make a decision and make a decision to, you know, make the decision whether to purchase it or not purchase it, but I personally don't think we should purchase it, so I am not in favor of Article three and purchasing it.
Okay. So, that'll be a two to one in favor. Christine, if we could jump, I know we have the uniqueness piece, but if we could jump to the piece that talks about the payments, or what the tax impact would be?
Thank you. So, where we're doing cash on, or where we're recommending cash on Howard, we can ignore the, or skip past the first section, but just to put the million dollars in perspective, the average house value being $490,000 in town, a 20-year loan for the million works out to $20 annually, and a 30-year loan works out to $15 annually. So, just to put the cost in sort of real dollars to our residents, it would be $20 a year to purchase this property, or $15 a year to purchase this property, depending on which chosen. And that's not chosen as part of the meeting, but something for afterwards, so. So, I just wanted to include that as part of this discussion.
An example to put it into perspective like that, because a million dollars sounds like a lot, but over the 20 or 30 years, there is minimal impact to each resident.
Yep. All right. I think that takes care of everything as far as the motions for, for town meeting. The next piece that we have.
And again, I just want to make sure that you're okay that, as part of these motions, understand that it is still subject to finally reviewed by town council if we have to make any amendments or changes to it.
Yep.
And also, obviously, executing a purchase and sale agreement is the number two.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
So, the next article is a vote to approve the determination of uniqueness for Zero Howard Street, subject parcel for Article two at special town meeting.
So, this is a requirement of Mass. General Law. The law envisions that if you want to put a park or fields, and you say, we think we're going to need somewhere around seven acres, is that you post forth for a period of time, you solicit bids, you review it. Obviously, land is all different, and so, it's not always easy to make those comparisons. In this case, we are, are being solicited to purchase it at a reduced price. So, the law does give us a mechanism to be able to sidestep that procurement process, but we have to identify as to why we are doing it, and we do it through a statement of uniqueness. It's my understanding, and I have prepared this and had legal counsel review it to make sure that it is consistent with the law, is that we would be looking to either expand it as a park, expand it as a field, or use it as an athletic field. So, we can, you can amend this in any way that you want, add, delete, change, whatever. If you accept it as is, great. If not, make the changes, and then, we will have to post this for a minimum of 30 days with the state, and then, after that, we would have the ability to be able to execute a closing document, assuming town meeting approved it.
Do we need to read this?
I don't think we have to read it. If you want to, you can, but.
Mike? Do you want me to read it?
I think so, if you don't mind.
The Board of Selectmen of the Town of West Bridgewater, Plymouth County, Massachusetts, hereby determines that advertising pursuant to Mass. General Law, C. 30B, Section 16E, will not benefit the local jurisdiction because of the unique qualities of location needed with respect to the following described real property to be acquired. Approximately 7.6 acres, known and numbered as Zero Howard Street, more particularly described in a deed recorded with the Plymouth County Registry of Deeds and Book 58400, page 80, and being shown on the Town Assessor's Map 46 at, as Lot 015, said property satisfies the unique requirement of the local jurisdiction because, one, the size of the parcel, flat topography, condition, and existing open fields make this, this parcel uniquely situated for expansion of a town park, of development of town athletic fields. Two, directly abuts across River, across River Street or Memorial Park, Town Park, which would allow an expansion of the town park in order to advance the town's goal and, huh, it moved, goal and preserve the character of the neighborhood. This parcel is situated in the town center, allowing easy accessibility for the general public to enjoy the town park or town athletic fields. And, four, said unique location and characteristics of this parcel best serves the town's interests in acquiring land to expand the town's park or for the development of town athletic fields.
So, I was really asking if you thought we needed to read it, but when you volunteered to read it, I.
I just said it.
I, I, I thought that was beautiful, so thank you.
Yeah. I said it. Sorry.
No, it was perfect.
Full send.
Better than me. But thank you for reading that. Any discussion on the, on the statement of uniqueness?
No.
Hearing none, a call for a vote?
On the state, sorry. On the statement of uniqueness, is there any changes that need to be added to this now, or is this something we would do at a later time?
I'm not sure I understand the question.
So, this statement of the uniqueness, this, this serves for the state? This goes to the state?
This is, this is justifying why we're not going through an auction process in order to purchase land.
Okay.
So, this substantiates the reasons why we're not going through that. And it is the Board's intent to use this property in one or two or three of these mechanisms.
Okay.
It doesn't necessarily lock you in, because again, you can't foretell the future, and quite frankly, it could be four years before it got developed. It might be an entirely different board. But as of right now, this is the intent of the Board as to what you want to do with the parcel, and you're saying this in a good faith manner.
All right. Okay. All right. So, entertain a motion.
I entertain a motion.
I entertain a motion to accept this as I read it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So with that, we had, obviously, there's a purchase and sale, and we talked a little bit about the contingencies and adding the lights, right? That was, Mike brought up the point.
Yeah, so let's talk about that. So we'll add, as part of our contingencies, we will add that the town would like to reserve the right to add lights at a later date. Are you okay with that? Is that the right language you'd like me to capture?
Yeah, as it would pertain to athletic fields, probably more than, you know, not just walking trails or... Should that be the use of the property?
Yeah.
Got it. All right. Moving along, a vote to approve an updated annual inspection policy for business licensed by the board.
So we have, when it was from 2012, really all it did was it just instructed the inspectors to do it, it didn't give a timeframe. Now that we have a, we have a building inspector that is on an interim basis and eventually will be looking for a full one, I just thought it would be best that we make sure that we identify exactly the time periods required so that way our licensing agency agent can do it. So we just want to, it's just making, it's clarifying the existing policy. In essence, making sure that the annual inspection is done at the end of the year. In fact, in December, you'll be voting on all of the annual licenses, so you need that inspection that provides guidance to the office to provide to you a recommendation for approval. And it's saying that at other times of the year, such for antique shops, they are done in the spring. So all this is doing is memorializing the timeframes. Then what we've been doing is past practice, but we want to make sure it's part of a policy.
Do we try to go together, as in Fire Department, Board of Health, Building Department, all same time, or do we hit the business three different times?
Yeah, it all depends on the timing of the inspectors. They routinely will do it together, but they can't always do it together.
Best effort, though.
Yeah.
Cool.
So what's the current poli... Is this the amended policy?
This is exactly the same policy, except it doesn't say September 1 and December 1, and it doesn't say March 1. They just do it as part of practice, because we inform them to do it. But it would be better just to have a policy.
Okay, all right, so this is just giving them some dates?
Correct, everything else is the same.
Perfect. You need a motion? Yes, please.
I make a motion to approve the updated annual inspection policy for businesses licensed.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You read a lot today, we're good. Next, approve the meeting minutes of September 25th. Take a motion.
Make a motion to approve the meeting minutes of September 25th, 2024.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Marcy, we'll give you this next motion and make a break. Accept the meeting minutes of October 16th, 2024 for review.
And make a motion to accept the meeting minutes of October 16th, 2024 for review.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Communication reports from boards, commissions, and town officials. Try town parade update. So we will all, I think, be in attendance at the parade on Monday?
Yep, I'll be there.
And Mike, you have volunteered to speak on our behalf.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your service as well. It's an honor to have a veteran on this board. We'll see you Monday. I don't think there's anything else here, right?
No, this is just an FYI to let you know. We have communicated to Annie, Mike, you will be speaking, so she's communicated that to the committee as well.
Right on, it's a great event. I really hope that the people that aren't in this room today can attend. And they're watching from home. I'll be driving the Grand Marshall and the Lincoln, so...
What?
Looking forward to...
What?
I walked it last year. Where were you?
I was in New York City, at the parade in New York City.
Yeah, I'll be driving the Grand Marshall unless I can convince my wife to take over the driving duties. Looking forward to seeing everybody there.
It'll be a good time. All right, so moving along, correspondence from the public to determine a course of action. Literally on the day of our last meeting, we received a letter from a resident complimenting the DPW. I'm just going to take a moment and read the letters from Mr. McPhail on Ellis Avenue. Dear Chairman Ryan, I would like to express my appreciation to DPW Director Philip McNulty and Assistant Director Michael Hutchinson for the removal of two dangerous dead ash trees on Ellis Avenue. The skilled workers of the DPW were great while performing this hazardous job. These two ash trees have been on DPW watch list for many years and reached, and had reached, the continuous loss of branches during windstorms. In addition, the trees were hollowing out and becoming a haven for animals. It would behoove the Board of Selectmen to consider an article at upcoming town meeting warrant establishing a separate DPW fund control point dedicated to the removal of dead ash trees lining public ways in West Bridgewater. These trees are public safety hazards, an example is the tree on Howard Street addressed across from the town library, perhaps as additional grant funding or federal state for this purpose. Given the public safety hazard of these trees and the possible, consider using CPA funds for this purpose. In any event, the current DPW for tree removal is not significant enough to take out this project with additional funding. My wife and I thank the Board of Selectmen and kudos to the DPW for a job well done. Sincerely, Peter McPhail. So Mr. McPhail, thank you for the letter. We are, we have heard many compliments as it relates to Phil and Mike in the DPW. We're happy to collect more, specifically regarding a fund. We will be able to handle that within the funds of the DPW. I did speak to our tree warden, Tim, earlier today as well, and he is seeking some grant money to replace some of these trees as well. So it is on our radar, it is in works, and when it comes up for budget for DPW this year, we will have a conversation with Phil to make sure that we do have an appropriate amount of funds in there to tackle anything as it relates to this and these trees, so. But it's great to reach out, it's great to hear the great work that the DPW is doing, and always excited to get a letter or two from a resident, so. Thank you very much. Any comments?
No, I appreciate the praise for DPW.
Public comment period, there is no public here, but if I could make one comment, 75% of our registered voters showed up to vote yesterday, which was fantastic. I want to thank the town clerk's office, who I think is home sleeping right now, or sleeping somewhere, hopefully they made it home first. They had a long couple of weeks, the, this has been a very busy election season or year for the town clerk's office, and especially with the walk-in voting. It is taking a lot of wind out of the sails, so thank you to Annie, Cher, and the board of registrars and all the volunteers down there. They had a couple of long days this year, and I know last night took a while to tally everything up and get everything right, so thanks. And thanks to everybody, like I said, 75% of the town coming out to vote.
That was a note I had written down, I want to echo everything Jeff said. Thank you so much for everything they do and continue to do for the town.
Being that 75% of the people showed up, it was really busy down there. I know that everybody got down to vote, but it was a really busy day down there, but it didn't seem crazy. Everything was under control, everybody was doing everything right. Thank you to the police also, Police Department, we had, you know, had to have a few extra stations, so appreciate that too, but it all went smoothly and it went well, so.
And then the other, the only other piece I had is we were able to attend a police promotional ceremony last week, where we had done it in the meeting, but I guess formerly, former Sergeant Craven was pinned as a lieutenant. But there were also several accommodations out there for some outstanding work done by our police department. Nothing that you wouldn't expect, knowing the people that are there, but it's nice to see some of the affirmation with that. So thanks to the chief to putting that together, thanks to Marilyn, as always, for the relationship she has with everybody in town and the willingness to loan out the COA to do things like that, so. It was nice, it was good to see all the officers, a lot of their families. So it was good.
It was a great showing. I think all the police officers made it out, everybody was in uniform, it was a nice event. And again, thank you to Marilyn at the Council on Aging, because she did offer that space up, and it is a great space for stuff like that, so it was a good event.
Super. Onto the town administrator's report?
Thank you. Excuse me. So a handful of years ago, the Board of Selectmen authorized the town of West Bridgewater to become part of a multi-level district lawsuit against the opioid manufacturers and distributors. We'll call it class action lawsuits, legally different but very similar. Anyway, with that said, over the year, over the past couple of years, we have received in about $165,000. We will receive more money going forward. However, as part of settlements agreements in the Attorney General's review of the state agreements, there are severe restrictions on how they can be used, and there was no legislative legal appropriation process that was created as part of it as well. So we are going to rectify all of that. We have received new guidance from the legislature and from our friends at Division of Labor, of Local Services. So first things first, is that those funds can be used for life-saving equipment throughout EMS department. The fire department is in need of two cardiac monitors that total about $108,233, one for each of the ambulances. And we have a choice. We can, by law, use these funds, excuse me, or we can go to town meeting and ask the residents for the money. That seems kind of silly, since we can use these funds. So these funds are technically under the guidance of the Board of Health, because this was a Board of Health-led effort across the country. So we'll vote on a policy in a minute, but what we did was we asked them to, the fire chief, to go to the Board of Health, receive approval from the Board of Health to spend the funds. But the guidance from the state is only the chief executive officer in the town, which is the Board of Selectmen or they designate, can then authorize the release of those funds. We are going to go to town meeting this year, because the funds currently are sitting as free cash and it just has to be moved over to this new fund that the town account is authorized to create under new state law. And in the meantime, he needs the cardiac monitors. So what I'm asking you tonight is to approve the request of $108,233 for the fire chief for the cardiac monitors, and as you saw in your packet, has already been reviewed and approved by the Board of Health as well.
So these are replacing two cardiac monitors that are now out of warranty. I just want to mention that.
Yes.
And newer, better on that, so. Any additional discussion?
No, it's a great idea and great use of funds.
All right, I make the motion, Marcy.
I will make the motion to approve the opioid, using the opioid funds for the fire department to purchase cardiac monitors.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And then, because this will now be a new use of funds, we just have to have a policy. What are we going to do? So we've created the policy based on the bulletin from the state. I've used 30 days as windows, just because that way people have to act and also people have guidance. Obviously, nobody has to wait 30 days, but we also don't want them sitting around for six months either. So we've used 30 days as a window of opportunity. And as I said earlier, after the Board of Health reviews it and passes it along to the Board of Selectmen's Office, excuse me, as the chief executive officer of the town, you are authorized to be able to spend the funds without town meeting approval. I have put Board of Selectmen slash Town Administrator, it's your choice. I have absolutely no energy on this whatsoever, and it's your choice as to what you would like it to do. If we use it as the Board of Selectmen, the positive is, is that the town sees that we're using the funds, you have involvement in it, but obviously, there are times of the year, especially over the summer, you only meet once a year, it can delay something. If you want to defer it to me, that's fine, I'm more than welcome to do it. It's not going to be as transparent to the town, so I understand that, but it also means that upon a request, we can turn around in 24 hours. So it's up to you as to what you want to do. If you select one or the other, and then what we'll do is we will amend it accordingly, and then we'll ask you to sign it at that point.
My thought is it should be the Board of Selectmen, just to make the approval.
I'm, yeah, I'm okay with that. I mean, I'm okay either way. If we did go with the Town Administrator, I think that, you know, it would be nice to do an update at the next meeting, letting the residents know, but I'm okay with Board of Selectmen doing it as well.
How often would, do we anticipate requests coming in during... How often do we get requests now?
This was our first one. We've had the money for two years. However, in fairness, we couldn't spend the money up until recently, because there was no guidance from the state. We would have had to actually bring it to town meeting. And the problem with that is it's so narrow as to how you can use these funds. I hate bringing something to town meeting, saying, "I need a town meeting vote to spend it." But, oh, by the way, you don't have the ability to say no, and you don't have the ability to be able to spend on something different. Like, that's so silly, right? So to my knowledge, nobody's been spending these funds. So I'm assuming, Mike, that, because after we spend this, we'll have about $50,000 left over until we accumulate more. You know, some people now make requests because they know the money is available, but whether or not that's going to be one a year or three a year, I just, I don't know the answer.
I mean, waiting sometimes isn't a bad thing. I have to agree to...
Yeah, and not that you wouldn't, but I, like, to me, this, obviously, it's got to go to the Board of Health, it's got to be approved, it's got to be in that channel, in that lane. You know, it's just, it's going to take a little time anyhow. If it's something urgent, we have to call a meeting, we call a meeting, but...
So we are going to put it as Board of Selectmen. We will place it on your desk, we'll ask you to sign it. I'll just ask you to take a vote now...
Sure.
...to accept the policy with the Board of Selectmen authorizing the funds.
Make a motion to accept the opioid funds spending policy with the amendment of the select board making the decision.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm making the approval, I think that's the correct word.
Yeah, you're okay. And transfer station stickers are now available, as the board mentioned earlier. The town clerk usually starts selling them on November 1st, but they were a tad busy over the past week. And I can reiterate again, as what you said about the amount of work and effort they put in, but what I think the general public always misses, not just in West Bridgewater but across the state, is that they still play town clerk every day. Like, they have a full-time job, and on top of that, they are legitimately running an election every day for two weeks. And even I know on election day, they're here by 5:15 in the morning, and they're here until midnight. So those are long weeks. So they, they are starting to sell the transfer station stickers now, they are available. We will include the QR code with them, as we discussed. We're just making it available so everybody knows, so people do not miss it. FYI, it's signed off on the Spanish station, Spanish society's request, as they do every year. And the next meeting will be on November 20th, and just an FYI on that, you will have your tax hearing at that time, and we will also be meeting in joint session, or at least they've been invited, is the planning board and the zoning board of appeals, because you will hear a presentation on the MBTA Communities Act. This is not about whether or not people are in favor or against it, it is a requirement of the law to bring it to town meeting for a vote, which we will do in May. And as part of the requirement of the law, there is a public education process that has to be enrolled out, so nobody's hearing about it for the first time. So we had a choice, we hired through Tracy's office, the planning office, we hired using a state grant and outside consultant firm that specializes on this, and they could do presentations to the board, to the planning board, and to the zoning board of appeals, but they would charge us for the same thing three times. So we thought that it would be wiser to do it at one time, they will charge us less money, so we can use that grant to be able to use their services for other things going forward. So trying to be efficient with your time and their time and those funds.
Yep.
So you will hear that at the next meeting as well.
Yeah, long one, Ben.
I think I do have one more thing, because we talked about doing, like, joint meetings. What was the, what was the outcome of the joint meetings for...
Finance?
Yeah.
Budget?
For, when we get into budget season, I don't know if that's something we can start talking about now.
Yep, so it's actually on the agenda for the finance committee next week. They're going to meet about special town meeting, and Lynda and I have to start mapping out the schedule for all the meetings, so we need guidance. I believe this board is willing to do it. The finance committee has to be willing to do it as well, it's on their agenda for next week. So assuming that they say yes, we'll all convene and have that conversation. If they say no, then I presume that it would just be meetings as usual.
This board in favor?
Oh, yeah, absolutely, yeah.
I thought the one that we did last year was very productive, and gives us all a little time to think and process, and so it was good.
It might, the meetings themselves might be a little bit longer, because there's going to be more questions, but I think that...
For the town employee, it's better.
For the town employee, it's 100% better. Yeah.
All right. Motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Yeah. All right. Motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.